Thank you. Good evening. Tonight's Selectments Meeting for January 12, 2021. Open session is now in order. My apologies to our guests who have appointments with us this evening, and also to the public who may have been waiting for us to come out of executive session. Matters went a little longer than we thought, as well as a little technical difficulties getting back online. But we're ready to go forward. We're going to start this open session with a pledge allegiance to the flag, as today it may be more important than it's ever been since I've been a Selectman, that we do this, and also a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So we'll start with our first appointment. 7:00 PM schedule. Segal Reese, Department of Health Director, review the COVID-19 update for what's going on in town, how we've been dealing with it, and where we're going from here. Again, my apologies for holding you up. And the floor is yours. Thank you for joining us.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I just have a couple slides to go along with my presentation here. All right, so again, thank you for having me tonight. What I was hoping to do is a brief description of the case numbers, then talk a little bit about the testing effort with Norwood Hospital, and finish off, of course, with the vaccine update, and of course also answer any questions. So each week, the state reports on cases on a town-by-town level. The date encompasses a two-week period of case numbers and reports the average daily case number per 100,000, and the percent positive. The lower both of these numbers, the better. Looking at the top graph, which shows the average daily case rate per 100,000, it's just a way that we can compare cases town to town on a similar level. That's why they created per 100,000. And it also shows the percent positive since late August, when we really, when the state started to color-code the communities. And we saw a dramatic increase, just like the state did, in Norwood's rates after Thanksgiving. The rates come down a little, and it's been pretty level in the last couple weeks in the report, as you see at the top of the graph there. At the same time, we saw an increase in the percent positive, but that too has leveled off. The fact that those two numbers are moving together is a good sign that things are steady. Obviously, we want lower numbers, but if the percent positive was climbing dramatically, why the rate stayed about the same? That would show we're not really meeting our testing needs, and we're testing less people than we need to with the increase in the virus in the community. But at this point, things look pretty steady. We'll see, we pull, the next report will be pulled tomorrow morning. I do think it'll be a little higher, but not, nothing dramatic. Again, kind of level bouncing a little up and down, and that rate around in the 60s. The bottom graph shows the testing numbers since March, and I know the numbers are really small, but I think the point is that it's to really see the dramatic increase in testing that we've had as we progress through the pandemic. The blue portion of the bar show the negative tests, and the red portion shows the positive tests. Unfortunately, we are seeing more positive tests, but as we just talked about, there's, there has been a leveling off, and we're not seeing that dramatic increase anymore. And as always, I always have to reiterate, the more you test, the better. It's the more you find, the more you can contact trace. You can never have too much testing. And we were able to increase access to testing in Norwood by working with Norwood Hospital to secure the testing trailer. We've allocated funds to test patients and residents who are either self-paid or don't have insurance. And access to testing is just a vital tool that we have to control the virus and pandemic. And by working with the hospital, they've tested since the beginning of November. Over 1,000 tests have been performed at the trailer. So that's a great opportunity for the community to have additional access to testing. We've also been fortunate in Norwood that we've been very proactive with our control efforts with things like reducing access to Town Hall, closing buildings to the public. We really want to encourage everyone to reduce interactions as much as possible. If you don't need to go in person, you shouldn't, and it's really for the best of everybody. It's the fewer interactions we have between people, the better, because that's what causes the spread of the virus. And it's the cumulative effect of those interactions that spread it through a population. And now I'm very excited to talk about the next phase of our approach in this pandemic, which is to talk about the vaccine effort. The state has required municipalities that want to vaccinate, we're not required to vaccinate, but those that do, to work in regional entities to contribute to the effort. The vaccine ships in minimum doses of 200. So in this first phase, we're able to do first responders. In order to get the vaccine out the most efficient way, we pulled together with nine other communities for a total of 10. And we are in this week in the process of vaccinating over 1,000 police, fire, and EMS, our first responders in those 10 communities. The phases are pretty strict. These, this is really an overview of the phases. There's much more detail on the state website, which I'm going to have on the next slide. But we hope to be able to continue through the phases and vaccinate additional target populations. Local boards of health are well-positioned in communities to reach many of the target populations, especially if we look at that second bullet in Phase 2, when we can vaccinate teachers, public works, and utility workers specifically in Norwood, where we have our own light department, easy access to those employees, where we could very efficiently vaccinate them. And then just my last slide here. We are receiving many, many inquiries from the public. And I just want to encourage everybody who has questions to go to the state website. They have a ton of information. There's right, there's a button right on there that says, you know, "When can I get vaccinated?" The page is actually updated twice a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, because things are always changing. So definitely check back. And when we are able to have public clinics, they will be targeted towards certain populations at the beginning because of the restricted and the phased approach. We'll be using all our social media platforms, and we'll also be using the Swift Reach. And I also put a picture of that up here, where residents can sign up to get alerts from the town. And I know we've used that a lot during the pandemic and around the elections. So if you haven't already, I really want to encourage residents to go on the town website and sign up for the Swift Reach. Lastly, I want to just take this opportunity to thank the General Manager and the Board of Health, both which have been incredibly supportive of the Health Department. Our command team meets every morning, consists of Tony, Kathy Carney, Bernie, Stacy, and me. And from the start, we've really had the room to respond appropriately and follow the science and the data. And we've had that room to respond to the pandemic. So I really appreciate that. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my staff, that are absolutely amazing. I can't tell you the long hours that everyone has put in over the past 11 months or so, from contact tracing to enforcing the governor's orders, coordinating with schools, managing communications with the public, providing mental health resources, quarantine and isolation support. My staff has been yelled at, ridiculed, and threatened while doing their job. It's not an easy job that we've been having to do over the last, you know, almost a year now. But they continue to serve the community and perform above what is expected, and they're truly dedicated public servants. That was my basic overview. And I definitely want to open up for any questions at the board right now.
Okay, thank you. We do appreciate all the work of those you just mentioned, and I hope you'll pass on that they have our support, and thanks. Moving forward with the vaccinations, you failed to point out that we started yesterday with our first responders here in Norwood.
Yes, so we've been having two days of clinics with the first responders. We did 30 yesterday and another 30 today, and will continue this week in the whole region. Those 10 communities are going to be vaccinating this whole week and hopefully reach about 1,000 first responders.
All right, and as you mentioned, to go online and see the different groups that'll start the order that they'll be authorized to receive the vaccine. And you've mentioned that things are always changing. Just tonight, on my way into the meeting, my wife stopped me and said, "Did you hear that?" Apparently, she just heard on TV that they were now adding to the list, trying to get the vaccinations out faster to add to the list earlier. People 65 and older, or serious health issues. I don't know why she wanted me to know that, but have you heard anything about that?
Two for two, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I heard that on the news, too. I think what happened is the CDC has revised their recommendations to states to say, to roll up the vaccine to 65 and older. You know, rather than a more of a targeted phased approach, just open it up to that vast population, which is, I think, what I heard on the news. And unfortunately, I hear a lot, just like you hear on the news, we don't really have an inside scoop of what's going on. I think the problem with that is that that population is greater than the amount of vaccine we currently have. And the phased approach is actually dictated by the state. So the CDC sort of puts out recommendations, but each state chooses their own approach. I think they, some states have actually done that and opened it up to 65 and older. I don't know what Massachusetts will do. You know, the governor has his press conferences every day, and that's when we hear, just when everybody else hears, about how things will change with the phased approach. And they do caution us that it does change regularly as different populations advocate for their, you know, reason to get vaccinated. I would say one thing, we did get notification over the last couple of phases that local public health will be able to continue to vaccinate. When we were first doing first responders, when we had that opportunity, it was, it was communicated to us that this is, we're only having a discussion about doing first responders. We don't know about later phases. But they did say, for those that want to, will be able to continue to vaccinate, which of course, we do want to continue to do that.
Great. Questions, comments? Mrs. Donahue.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Reese, there's an expression, "You can't teach an old dog new tricks." I have to tell you, your beautiful way, and your Board of Health employees, and you, the way that you've handled this whole crisis is competent. It makes the citizens feel calm and almost serene, knowing that you are continuing the old tradition of Kathy Ronco and Stacy Lane and Karen, of protecting the health of the people of Norwood. And it's such a good thing that we have you. And thank you very, very much for all of your help.
Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Reese, for being here. I have a couple of questions. But the first and most important one is, how are you doing? How are you?
We're getting by, but thank you. One day at a time, like everybody else, right?
I appreciate that. And the reason I had asked the chairman if it would be possible to have you visit was that my previous work, I was working in Framingham up until about two months ago. And I know the Health Director there, Dr. Wong, recently left. And he was doing tremendous work there. As you know, he's a tremendous individual. So just wanted to, you know, I wanted people to hear how you were doing, and just to ask if there's anything that we can do as a town to better support you or continue to support you to make sure that, you know, you stay and continue to do the job that you're doing. If there's any resources we could provide.
Thank you, thank you. And acknowledging Sam Wong, Dr. Wong in Framingham, he was, I worked with him very closely. We both were officers in our professional organization, Massachusetts Health Officer Association. He was the president, and I was vice president. And we served sort of six years as officers together. So I know him very well. And it was not only sad to hear for Framingham, but really for Massachusetts and for local public health in general, that he was leaving.
Right.
Just the circumstances he had to work under were very difficult. And I wanted to make sure to say, you know, that that's not the situation in Norwood here, that the Health Department does feel very supported. And I appreciate the words spoken here tonight. And I did want to make sure to say that, that we are very supported by the community and by our boards and the management staff here. Norwood has been fabulous.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Segal, I just want to echo what others have said. Your team has done a great job. I know you'll continue to do a great job. And hopefully, we're on the downside of this with more and more vaccine, or individuals getting vaccinated every day, that even though the case numbers may be higher than where we want them to be, we know that the vaccines will take hold as more and more people get them and we get to the elderly. My concern is the actual notification or the awareness of the public with regards to when they might be able to get the vaccine. So do you see a big disparity between information that is available at the local level with your board or your team versus what, say, I'll just, we'll just talk about Norwood, about the residents of Norwood knowing what is available to them and when?
A disconnect in, I think there is a, there's a void of information which has made this whole thing kind of difficult. And I think it's, it's a product of a pandemic that nobody really has been able to navigate through. We constantly are using this statement that we're, you know, we're building the plane as we're flying it. So understanding the complexities of the response and the logistics behind the administration from, and delivery of the vaccine is huge. It's very tedious. So understanding that it's a very difficult rollout. But I think there's a lot of questions and about when people are going to get it, because there's kind of a void of information. And we're in that same unfortunate void of information as the public. We, you know, where it is constantly changing, it's hard to communicate. We'll do our best to use, you know, social media and the Swift Reach system, and, you know, refer people to the state website as much as we can. And we do uncelebrating, we try our best to return all those phone calls and those questions about the vaccine. But that, if people have questions, they really need to look at the state website, because we're sort of an arm of that and have to follow that.
Is there any information, Mr. Manager, that we could sort of post at some of the public buildings? That we know, they're not all open, but we're going to be, at some point, start making them available, or even just posting on the outside of the buildings information regarding the vaccine, or communication to make sure that we're trying to get to as many people as possible in the shortest period of time to avoid people absolutely feeling helpless or unknown about what they can and cannot do. And I know that's dependent on individuals' access to social media. But I hate to see that there is nothing that we can do to try to make people aware of where we are or what we're trying to accomplish over the next few months.
Sure, we can certainly get more information out there and put it in more places, but the challenge is, we don't have the information to get out. We know what the next phase is, but we don't know exactly when it's going to begin. We don't know if we're going to be doing it. For sort of the average resident out there, when they can get the vaccine? The short answer is, we don't know. We know that the plan is that by June or July, everyone will have access to it. But as Segal said, we didn't realize until, we weren't told, and not just here in Norwood, but local public health and government, we weren't told that CVS and Walgreens would be doing nursing homes until we sort of read about it in the news. The state doesn't give us any information ahead of time. The best they would do is, I think, Segal, we had one meeting where we got an email three hours ahead of a governor's announcement, and that was the record, that we knew three hours ahead of time what the rules were. We can continue to make sure on NCM, on our website, and all of our other, our social media arm, that we get what information we have out there, and we can begin talking about it regularly. I think having this conversation tonight is important. We do a weekly COVID update that we've started calling our weekly COVID and vaccine update. But we are sort of at the behest of the state government to tell us, well, here's your actual vaccine, and here's where you're going. I mean, we found out we would be doing first responders maybe 10 days before we did it. A week later, we got vaccine in. And then about five days after that, according to the state's schedule, we started. So we are, we are not ahead, we are not getting any information ahead of anyone else. But we'll increase the overall messaging we have, and as we know information, we'll make sure to push it out there on all of our different mediums.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Segal.
Just a real quick, Segal, really great job. Keep up the good work. We know how difficult it is working remotely, as so many people do. You feel sometimes like you're losing touch, and you know, you're not in the mix. But I think you and your department have done a superb job so far. And I know you'll keep it up. And anyway, just know, when you're all alone in your home trying to do your job, that we really do support you. We think you're doing a great job, and we appreciate your efforts, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, well said. Our thoughts, and desire to be of any help we can to you and everyone else working on this is an open hand offered. And thank you for your time and your information this evening. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, and thank you for all those kind words and support. It doesn't mean a lot, I appreciate it.
So now we'll move on to our right-on-time 7:15 appointment with Russ McGuire, Airport Manager. We have the discussion about the runway update project. And also, while Mr. McGuire is here, the General Manager under our new business has an item for a reserve fund transfer in an amount of $35,000 for repair of the security system damage. Mr. McGuire, why don't you start with that for us before you talk about the runway project?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. The reserve fund transfer is due to a security breach and some property damage, which happened on Monday, January 4, at about 1:50 PM. This made the news. Most people have seen at least, heard mention of the security breach. A motorist ran through vehicle security gate number one, which is adjacent to Flight Level's passenger terminal. This prompted a response by Airport Management, Flight Level, our air traffic control tower personnel, Norwood Police and Fire, and ultimately, the Transportation Security Administration. Shortly after the motorist actually demolished the gate, she drove at a high rate of speed south along the north-south taxi lane inside the fence. This is the aircraft operating area. She then drove off the pavement into the wetlands, where she was on foot until she ultimately was apprehended by the Norwood Police. She was brought into custody, and her vehicle was eventually pulled out of the wetlands, thanks in large part to members of the fire department in exposure suits, which the gentleman went actually out into the wetlands to work alongside a company that was able to winch the vehicle out of the wetlands. There was, there was a shutdown of all, all of our runways. This is something that we do. Whenever we have an event like this, it's a precaution to prevent the police and/or fire vehicles from inadvertently moving onto an active runway or taxiway. The only aircraft that were operating during the event were the newscopters and some, I believe there was one or several private helicopters that were operating at the time as well. So the news feeds that you were receiving were from the Channel 5 helicopter and/or the NBC affiliate, which has a news copy here at Norwood as well. We eventually reopened the runways at about 3:55 PM. There was substantial property damage to both the security gate and its electronic gate operator that requires us to now replace the system. There was also damage to a security camera. And there's, there are some connectivity issues right now with the entire access control system in that, in that part of the airport. In the interim, our gate service provider, along with the Assistant Airport Manager Mark Ram, removed the damaged gate and replaced it with an old gate, which for now at least, provides a static barrier. So I did send to the town manager's office on January 8, a request for a reserve fund transfer of $35,000. This would include the replacement of the security gate, gate operator, security camera, and then some connectivity work that we anticipate. That is, that was, was anyway, the highlight of last week. As far as the runway projects...
One moment, let me interrupt you there for a moment. So the, you forwarded the request for the reserve fund transfer. I believe the Finance Commission approved that last night. But they still want to know that the matter has the support of the board. So I'd accept the motion. Mrs. Donahue?
Question, please. Don't we have any insurance?
That will come later, though. They need the money now to make the repair now, not wait for all that to get settled.
Will we reimburse the account when we get the insurance money?
Hopefully, we'll be replaced by insurance funds.
The newspaper said $25,000. How come it's $35,000?
Don't rely on the newspaper. Mr. McGuire?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The actual, actually, we received a, an estimate, I'm actually looking for as we speak, for, I believe, $28,000 for the replacement of the gate, the gate operator system. Yes, it's $28,547 to replace the security camera and then restore the connectivity to the access control system. That was received today. That was $2,700. So it's under $35,000, but it's more than $25,000.
Mr. Chow?
Just a couple of questions. So I'm going to support the, the transfer makes the most sense anyways, and it was approved by the Finance Commission. They just want to make sure that, right, as the chairman said. Is there anything that we've learned through this accident that we can prepare better to install, whether it's bollards or putting the cameras in a different location so that they wouldn't get damaged if the gate got hit? Are we looking at anything such as that that would help us minimize future damage? I know you can eliminate it, but minimize potential in the future?
So I'll let Russ jump into the details on that. The short answer is no. This wasn't a case of just sort of an automobile accident. There was, a person had a bit of a problem, and they intentionally drove and smashed their car into the gate. And it's an active gate. So redesigning the gate and looking at it differently wouldn't really work. It's sort of when somebody, for whatever reason, is intending to ram their car into something, it just wouldn't work.
Right, but cameras can be relocated so that they're not vulnerable. You could put them on, most of those buildings are close enough to the gate that it could zoom in if it was at, on top of it instead of on top of the gate. That's what I'm looking for, is any alternative, so that you might be able to...
I would add that the camera in question was not physically sighted on the gate itself. It was on a separate monopole. The gate was hit so hard that as it, you know, in the, the action of the gate being lifted off of its supports, it actually whiplashed into the monopole that the security camera was sighted on.
I just don't think we can be so, like, we're not going to look at it, or we don't think there could be an improvement. Everything can be looked at. I'm not trying to minimize what was, was done.[1601.00] I'm not trying to minimize what was done. I realize it was extraordinary. These things don't happen every single day, but we have an opportunity to try to prevent as much damage the next time around. So I wouldn't just say no.
Sure. If you would like us to look into where we can place the camera so that the next time somebody smashes to the gate, we can certainly look at that.
Bollard on the corner so that if they want to wreck the gate, wreck the gate, but they're not going to wreck the whole structure of the gate.
The answer is yes.
Thank you. So I move that we support the reserve fund transfer of $35,000.
Second?
All in favor? Mr. Jah?
Aye.
Mr. Chair votes aye. That's unanimously passed. All right, thank you. Now, finally, we would like to hear your update on the runway project, please.
There is no runway project at present. The two grant projects that are underway right now are environmental assessment project and a post-construction monitoring project that is for the current fiscal year. For the coming fiscal year, we'd be looking for a taxiway delta construction project and the removal of some obstructions in the runway approach surfaces. So there's not, I'm not sure what runway project you're alluding to, but we don't have, we don't have a project that's ongoing that involves the runways.
Russ, I think it's the paving of the 300-foot strip.
That project is actually to be moved down to by 2026. That's not, that's not a project that we'll be doing this year or even next.
What's that project involve?
That project, it was one of the projects identified in the master plan that was completed this past summer. What we're looking to do is take the overrun areas, the 300-foot overrun areas, which are the ends of, the two ends of the main runway, the 300-foot overruns that are grassy surfaces now, and pave those. Those are, you know, this is a project that was identified in the technical master plan for its, you know, the safety concerns of undershoots and overruns that we've had on that runway. But the FAA felt that there were other projects, right now anyway, at least in the next several years, that require us to address on a more immediate basis.
All right. So that's the first intended work that has anything to do with the runways themselves?
The first runway project that we're looking at, this is the November 2020 capital plan, would be the runway 10-2-8 project reconstruction. That's right now slated for federal fiscal year 2022.
Okay. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. When I heard about the other project that you just mentioned that's slated for 2026, I started to worry about it because it would increase the whole concept of our airport. And I thought that if we were going to change it so much, that there should be input from the people who live in the airport area. So I'm glad it's been put off. Thank you, Mr. Maguire.
Mr. Mazuko?
And if we could, Russ, if you could just expand, the project that's being referenced to pave the end of the runway, there's a 300-foot strip that is currently not paved, and this project would simply pave that for safety purposes. It would not change the type of planes that can come into the airport or the frequency of planes. It's just a safety project. Russ, can you just, I think that's what everyone wants to sort of hear about, if you could just explain that more eloquently than I did.
Right. This is, this is not going to change the classification of the airport. The airport's a general aviation airport. It's non-airline, non-military. So the classification, which is a category 2B airport, will not change. What we're looking for really is to enhance the safety. We've had, again, we've had both undershoots and overshoots on that main runway. I don't think I was in the job two weeks when we had the first undershoot. We had overshoots as well. Had jets go off, fire into the runway. We've had aircraft not quite make the runway. So the 300-foot ends of the main runway are, at present, sod. It's just grass, which works well when you don't have wet conditions, which unfortunately we have a lot of here at the airport, which sits in a wetland. And also in the winter months when we have to plow, those safety areas are really compromised. They're not, they really don't serve an adequate function as a, you know, as a safety enhancer. So by having them paved, the first benefit is, the primary benefit is the safety. It will allow pilots who are looking to, you know, take off with a heavier load of fuel, you know, it will allow them to calculate, you know, the added pavement as well. So it's a benefit on that end, but primarily, it's a safety enhancement.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Even though it wouldn't change the category of the airport, it would in fact change the types of planes, expand the types of planes that could operate from the airport.
I don't believe so. I know that there's a lot of traffic on social media about Boeing 767s and Boeing 737s and whatnot, and that's been an ongoing dialogue since as long as I've been here and probably for many, many years prior to that. It's a general aviation airport. There's, there are a number of limiting factors to this airport. First of all, it's not certificated for commercial service by the FAA. We also have 4,000-foot runways even without the paved safety areas. The bearing strength of the runway is, both runways, about 69,000 pounds. You know, these large commercial airlines, they run over 300,000 pounds. And finally, you know, there are wingtip, wingtip clearance issues that are definitely a limiting factor here. So there's no, there's no interest by the commission, there's no interest by my office to move beyond, you know, a category 2B airport, general aviation. It's been the case for as long as I've been here, and I'm sure this will be a general aviation airport long after I'm gone. Just doesn't, it couldn't support commercial airline service.
That's it. Any questions?
Did we vote on the reserve fund transfer?
Yes.
We did.
Yes, yes, we did. Unanimous. Thank you.
Totally.
Don't confuse me. It's too easy. Mr. Maguire, we thank you for taking the time. I apologize again for holding you so long, but we appreciate you being here and the information you gave us and the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Mr. Slater. Almost on time, sir. Appreciate your patience as well, and you're going to have a little discussion as you position as chairman of the Cokely Middle School Project and give us an update. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mazuko, and members of the board of selectmen. Thank you for having me here today. Let me start just with a little bit of, a little bit of history. Early in 2020, MSBA voted to approve the Cokely Middle School Project to enter their funding program. That's really significant in and of itself because typically in a year, MSBA will approve maybe one in 10 and one, or one in 12 of projects that are submitted. So this is really a great opportunity for Norwood, something that I think we certainly should take advantage of. So we spent most of 2020 looking to hire an owners' project manager and an architect, engineer in accordance with the, with the MSBA requirements, which are, you know, very cumbersome, very time-consuming, very specific. But we finally have our team together, and as an owners' project manager, we have Compass Project Management. As an architect, engineer, we have AI3. And that's the same team that we had when we built the Norwood High School, as you know, which came in, you know, on time and on budget. And Compass has also worked on several other major projects in Norwood, including the DPW building and the recent construction at the electric light department. So we're pleased to have them. They're a great team. Looking forward to working with them. They're just great people to deal with. So if we could just go to the first slide.
I'll get you some help. One moment. There we go.
Just a minute.
Excuse me?
Just a minute.
Okay.
This is why I couldn't be on time, Mr. Slater. It's not my fault.
Well, when it comes to this kind of technical stuff, I mean, I'm functionally illiterate, so I'm not too proud to admit that.
I'm right there with you.
There we go. That the first slide, Mr. Slater, or you want to go to the next one?
I can't really see them, but, okay, let me, that is the first slide. Really what I want to do is I just want to go over, you know, where we are, where we're going, and talk about the schedule a little bit. So if we can go to the next slide. First thing we really had to have to do in this process is to establish a critical path. And there are really three critical paths that we have to look at. And the first one deals with educational planning and educational visioning. And what we really have to understand is that middle school is not like they used to be in the old days. It's not a bunch of desks, you know, in a row facing in the front of the room with the teacher at the blackboard. Educational delivery is so different these days, and it's something which the Cokely Middle School simply can't do. It just simply doesn't have the ability or the facilities to do it. As hard as the teachers work, they just don't have the resources that they need to do that job properly. So, you know, we've been engaged the last several months in an educational planning and visioning. And really what's that going to, what that will do is determine, you know, what is taught and how it's going to be taught. We've had quite a bit of involvement from professional staff here in Norwood. The teachers are really enthusiastic and given some great suggestions on what we should do, particularly in things related to student services and educational delivery. Particularly, we had some great discussions on music and the arts, and those, that's, those teachers are, again, in particular, very enthusiastic about that. And what we do for education, planning, visioning, is what will determine the building size. Now, the other thing we have to look at in educational planning is what the building is going to be, what the grade configuration will be, whether it will be a five to eight or whether it's going to be a six to eight. We will be looking at both of those. One of the advantages of going to a five to eight is that the elementary schools are presently overcrowded, so if they can take the fifth grade out, that'll alleviate the space constraints we do have in those elementary schools and make it easier for them to deliver the product that they would like to do. And this is something that will take a little bit of time, but we are actively studying this. Eventually, you know, after all the work is done, the school committee will make the decision whether they go to five to eight or six to eight. Next slide, please. Next thing we have to do is determine where we're going for a site. We did a site analysis, and surprisingly, there are more sites in Norwood than you would think. We looked at 10 sites to some degree, but we looked four of them in detail, including the existing Cokely site, the Savage Center, Hennessy Field, and Forbes Hill. We looked at things like, you know, the size of the site, the availability of land. I mean, you may have a lot of site, but because of wetlands or other concerns, that may reduce the amount of available acreage. And AI3 did a matrix where they looked at a number of criteria and evaluated all the sites accordingly. And based on their evaluation, they determined that the Cokely site made the most sense. Our middle school building committee met yesterday, and, you know, Mr. Mazuko and Mr. Maloney and Mr. Lane are on that committee, and we reviewed the material from AI3. And unanimously, the committee agreed that the Cokely site is the proper site for new facility. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean we looked at where it's going to be on the site or how it's going to be configured, just we feel that the Cokely site is the preferred site when everything is set and done, and that's how we're going to be moving forward on that. Next slide, please. Now, even though we all know what a bad building in Cokely is, you know, because of MSBA requirements, you can't simply assume that you're going to be going to a new building or even, you know, in addition and a renovation to an existing building. You have to look at the existing building and look at its systems and look at its condition, look at hazardous materials, you know, just basically go over the whole site and, you know, make a determination in the presentation to MSBA, you know, why if you feel you want to go in another direction, why you don't feel the existing site is a viable option. And I think that, you know, we'll easily be able to do that, and MSBA, you know, will approve us going to a different, different type of facility. Next slide, please. So the next slide talks about timeline, and I'll go over a couple of, couple of things there. You know, first thing is to submit what's referred to as a PDP. You're going to see all these different acronyms. That's the preliminary design report, and that's what we're looking at right now. In a couple of minutes, I'll go over, you know, some of these various reports really, really involved. But that'll be done in March. That's sort of a preliminary report. Then we do a more detailed report called a preferred schematic report, which will be submitted in July. That basically will sort of have a final recommendation for us. MSBA will be reviewing that and hopefully approving it. And then we'll get into a more detailed report called a schematic design, which will give us much more detail on the specifics of how the building will fit on the site and the, oh, yeah, more, more, more the basic engineering, you know, cost estimates, et cetera, et cetera. So the intent is to submit all our material by the end of the year, get approval from MSBA, hopefully, you know, nothing guaranteed, but hopefully, beginning of 2022, January, February, and then go to town meeting in the spring of 2022 for town meeting and, you know, the voters, this is likely to be a dead exclusion, to give the will of the town, whether they want to proceed with this project or not. Assuming that they do, design will be completed in the spring of '23. We'll begin construction in the summer of 2023, and hopefully have a new school ready to go by the fall of 2025. Next slide, please. So I won't go over all of this stuff, but right now, we're in what's referred to as the preliminary design program, and it involves, you know, things like, you know, the educational program, you know, I talked about that, and space summary, you know, how big the building is going to be, because MSBA has certain limitations of what you can do, you know, how much they will be willing to pay for. Look at the existing site and do a preliminary evaluation of alternatives, a short list. And we know now that we will have a minimum of five things to be looking at. One is simply a repair of the existing building, you know, no improvement, just basically, you know, improving the mechanical systems and other systems and bringing up code. We will also look at this point at an addition renovation of the existing building for a six to eight and a five to eight configuration, and a new building for a five to eight and a six to eight configuration. After we complete that, we'll go to what's referred to, that thing in the middle, the preferred schematic report. It's basically a more detailed evaluation of all those alternatives. Look at it in great detail, you know, particularly, you know, from an engineering standpoint, soil standpoint, location on the site, environmental issues, et cetera. Evaluate those alternatives. The school committee, after reviewing all this material, will make a determination whether, in their view, it should be a five to eight or a six to eight. And after that, you know, the committee, the middle school building committee will make a final recommendation. And the last item, which is the schematic design report, is basically everything necessary to design a new facility, you know, again, all your, your site work, your very, very detailed environmental work, all your schematics, you know, looking at code, et cetera. Detailed design estimates, because this is very critical. This is what MSBA will look at. You're going to have your detailed estimates on construction costs, and this is what MSBA will use when they determine how much money they will reimburse you for the project, as well as the project schedule. So, next slide, please. Just a little bit more on the preliminary design report, you know, where we are, you know, educational program and visioning is what we're doing right now. It's going to take probably until next month. And then concurrent with that will be the space summary, which is going to, you know, how much, how big the building is going to be, which is going to be based to a great extent on the educational plan, looking at the existing building and, you know, doing a preliminary evaluation of alternatives. As I, as I noted, you know, at least we're going to carry five alternatives forward until the future phases. So that'll be done by the end of March of 2021. So the last thing I'd like to show you is, on a schedule, is that we have a number of community forums. We certainly want to get the opinion of people, not only parents whose children would go to this new school, but we want to get views of people in the neighborhood. We want to get, you know, other voters of Norwood who are going to bear concern because, you know, it's, you know, likely will be a dead exclusion override and an increase of taxes. So we're trying to solicit opinion from them. And the first meeting that we have is scheduled for this Thursday. It's going to be a virtual meeting, 7 o'clock. There's Fly for This, which is on the town website. You can just click on it and register to attend the meeting. As of this afternoon, counting, you know, panelists and whatever, we have over 100 people there, so we certainly think we're going to get quite a, quite a number of people involved. We've advertised the Norwood Record on NCM, on the bulletin board. Notices have been sent to all the parents, schoolchildren, and social media, et cetera. So that'll be the first meeting we have. We have, I think, five meetings planned in total, community meetings. And not to say we won't have more if we feel they're necessary. And again, we want to solicit opinions of the citizens, because they're the ones who in the end are going to, you know, say yea or nay on the project. And the last thing we want to note is that, you know, we are in the process of developing a website for this. It's the New CMS Project, one word, N-E-W-C-M-S-project.org. Still a work in progress, but there are a few things up right now, and we intend to have that as sort of a repository for all the project information we have, you know, replays of meetings, graphics that we use at different meetings. I have a Q and A section. replays of meetings, graphics that we use at different meetings, have a Q and A section, the ability to have people ask us questions on various topics. And, you know, it's being worked on right now. It is up, and it's still not complete, but we're getting there. So that's really about all I have, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we are very excited about this, looking forward to getting this done and bringing it to the townspeople for them to make a decision. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I know the whole board does. Before I ask for questions or comments from the majority of the board, I'm going to ask the minority of the board, Mr. Lane and Mr. Maloney, representing on this Coakley committee, if they would like to add anything at this time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Slater. I think what I would like to add is that Mr. Slater has done a great job just keeping this moving forward under these difficult circumstances. When we started the process, we had the luxury of visiting other middle schools and looking at things that maybe we would like to see in our middle school, and that was great. And then it came to a halt, but the process never really did. So I just want to say to Alan, thank you so much for your leadership and for all the work that you've put in, and it's a really good group. And I think Thursday night is going to be a nice event, and I'm hopeful that people attend and ask good questions.
Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Maloney?
Well, Mr. Slater does not need any more florid praise from me, I'll tell you. But I know he's one of my good friends, and the process is going well. And just one note on what Mr. Slater talked about briefly. We did look at 10 sites. In fact, there were six existing schools besides the Coakley that were included. And Mr. Riccardi and I would sort of ask if they could do that, and they did. Particularly like the Oldham School, could you build a junior high sort of at the front of that property and use the existing structure as a fifth grade? They did vet them, and they, to our satisfaction, at least to mine, Mr. Lane, that the sites are too small to do what we were thinking of doing. And in the end, the Coakley really does make the most sense. I agree with that, and I do think that, I do think, you know, the other sites that Mr. Slater mentioned, too, were looked at. They have their virtues, but this is the only one that has all the virtues we're looking for. So that initial sort of road, what do you call it, landmark or milestone has been achieved, I think, with great efficiency and provenance. So looking forward to Thursday as well. Thank you.
Certainly. To put a structure and facility as large as this on the Oldham School would have upset Wilson quite a bit, would have eliminated the space for people to.
And that came up in conversation, too, sir.
I'm sure it did. Mrs. Donahue, Mr. Jaar, any questions, comments?
Just so happy the way it's going. Thank you very much.
Yes, so I guess that sums it up. We appreciate the work everyone on your committee is doing. We appreciate your time, your patience tonight, as well as the information you laid out for us, and we stand ready to help you with anything you need going forward to make this a successful project for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I appreciate your kind words, and we'll move this forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Let me move on to new business. First item I had listed was discussion of town meeting quorum reduction. And the reason I put that out there is just to see if there's any appetite for doing so at this upcoming town meeting, because if there is, there's requirement that we post the fact that we intend to have such a discussion, impossible vote. And I would have that posted for 26th scheduled meeting. Otherwise, we can just bypass the whole topic. I did have some communication with the moderator on this matter back in January 4th, and he had an opinion that we may want to consider quorum reduction in the unlikely event that the body votes not to proceed with a remote meeting and instead to hold an in-person meeting. And he thought, you know, back then, we didn't have to discuss it, but time is now moving forward, and we do have to do it with a specified notice time. So just want to know if members think we should put on the agenda for discussion, or you see no need to lower the quorum in this circumstance?
Information filed.
I think, don't we want to have a discussion of this?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Jaar, what was the quorum in November? Was it 42 persons?
I think it was 42. Forty-something, I think it was 42.
Okay. All right. This is going to be online, right?
This is online, unless the body votes not to. The body gets a choice. I don't assume that's going to happen. Think that's highly unlikely, but it's a possibility.
Might be a good safeguard to reduce the quorum.
I think it should be on the. All right, so we don't need, we don't need to really further discuss it tonight. We need to think about it, and I think there's enough input from the board. I'll even take it as a motion to put this on a future agenda for discussion.
So moved.
And seconded. All in favor, Mr. Jaar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Share votes aye. So Mrs. Overhill will certainly competently take care of that for us, and that'll be further discussion on our meeting on the 26th of the month. We have also, for hopefully approval and signature of the board, the town meeting warrant for the 4th. As discussed previously, this is basically the same warrant we had in November. Two items in November were removed, because they were handled in November, and two items were added by the manager. And one item was added by the board itself last week on petition of residence business. And the order was changed somewhat to accommodate the town moderator's needs and the planning board's desires, but the articles themselves are the same. If you read them closely, the planning board did change some wording in a few of their articles, but they certainly haven't changed the articles. They're the same articles, they just added, needed some more wording that was more proper for them. And of note is the very beginning of the warrant. It's set up differently because it's a remote town meeting, given calling to the people of the town, how this meeting is going to be conducted. It has also suggested time change. We typically post the meetings for 7:30. This is being suggested to post it at 6:30, whatever the board votes will be the time. There was some discussion. We did move it earlier when we went to the high school, and we got a quorum early, and people seemed to like it. We think with setting up the remote also may take a little more exercise and a little more time to handle some of the mechanics of the meeting that might add time to the meeting, so it's a good idea if we at least try to get started early. So other than that, it's pretty much if we've seen warrants in the past. Motion to approve. Second. And with the six-hour time stamp, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Pox? Unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Mizuko, recommendation to accept $96,367, sir.
Yes, this is from National Grid. This is, the board is aware, when we have National Grid, I have to tear up a road for gas work. We actually prefer that they pass the road, pay us the otherwise cost of the road, and then we add it as part of our annual road resurfacing, so that way we know we're using our contractors, we're able to oversee the work, and generally get a much better bang for our buck. This is a completion of some National Grid work. This $96,000 will go to our annual resurfacing this spring. I recommend the board accept.
And the amount is an amount we've calculated and requested, not simply an amount they've offered?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So that'd be accepted as a chapter 4453A donation for the purpose indicated to be respent on road surfacing. All in favor? Pox? Unanimous. We have the Friends of the Norwood Boys' Soccer submitting a request to hold a car wash Saturday, July 10th, and Saturday, August 28th, 2021, 2021, correct, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Motion to approve. All in favor? Pox? Unanimous. Reserve fund transfer we handled. We also have received monthly report from the building commissioner, Mr. Walsh, for his monthly activities. Information filed. All in favor? Pox? Unanimous. Mr. Mizuko, any update for us, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items. On Mr. Walsh's monthly building report, just to let the board know, we continue to see a historic level of building permits and building permit activity. Usually, January is quite a slowdown for the building department, and we have not seen that this year, so permit activity remains high. Carrie McCarthy would like me to announce for seniors in the community that the AARP tax preparers will return to the senior center February 9th for folks 60 and older or folks who are disabled. Please call the senior center for an appointment, 781-762-1201, extension five. Once again, the AARP tax preparers will return to the senior center February 9th for folks 60 and older or individuals who are disabled. Please call the senior center for an appointment, 781-762-1201, extension five. Two other announcements. One, I'm happy to announce to the board and to the public that I have appointed Kevin Shaughnessy as the superintendent of the Norwood Light Department. We posted the position last week, and Kevin applied, and after discussing with him and reviewing his credentials, he began this week, as of this Monday, as the superintendent of Norwood Light. So we're happy to have him in that position. And last but not least, for town meeting members, if you have not gotten your email address into the town clerk's office, please get your email address into the town clerk's office. You will need to do that to be able to access the remote town meeting. We will have five remote town meeting training sessions for town meeting members. They will be getting an email this week with the log-on information for those sessions. We have had upwards of 200 town meeting members submit their email addresses to the clerk's office, which is fantastic. We would like to go the rest of the route and get them all there. And anyone needing accommodation that is a town meeting member, too, please contact the general manager's office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other members have something they'd like to bring up at this time? Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, nice choice, Kevin Shaughnessy for the light department. He certainly has earned the job. He's been a loyal help to our light department for so many, how many years so far?
He is at the 30-year mark, much like Jimmy Collins. Most of our light department staff, they come with us right out of college and they stay. Jimmy was in college when he started.
They know the system in and out, and they know all the things that have happened, and that's a very, very, very good thing. Nice choice. Very good. So while I have been sorting out some papers, I found this program. This program is from 1976. It was for the dedication of the selectmen's plaque and the selectmen's office. And I thought it would be interesting, because Mr. Maloney is heading up 150th anniversary celebration. We have a good committee working on it, and since things have been so rough in Washington these past week or so, it's time to remember good things that have happened, too. So in 1976, there was a committee of 20, the bicentennial committee of the town. My sister, Alga Abdallah, happened to be the chairwoman of the committee, and it was the bicentennial committee that sponsored the construction of this selectmen's memorial. All of the funds were raised privately. Town dollars didn't go into it. They raised the money, and they made this beautiful plaque. On the plaque committee served Walter Dempsey, a bandstand on the common is named after him, Franklin Swift. Those of you who are into history of the town of Norwood, in the movie, The Movie Queen, the old movie that was filmed in the hoodies, Frank Swift's laundry is in there, the people coming out of the laundry is in there, and he did so much for the town of Norwood. And Jim Drummy, who was one of our selectmen, and he was also an assessor in the town, they were on the plaque committee. So it's worth it to take a minute to mention the program. The invocation was by Monsignor Sennett, who was also a pilot, he was the Monsignor at St. Catherine's, but he was a pilot at Norwood Airport, and he served on the airport commission. My sister, Alga, Ollie, did the speeches. And the madrigal singers, who we still have today, under Catherine Connor-Moyn, now, at that time, were under the direction of Bill St. Laurent. The unveiling of the plaque with the committee, and Joe Corin, who was a member of the Norwood Board of Selectmen, who was an outstanding member of the board for many, many years here, he made the speech for the Board of Selectmen. The benediction was by very Reverend Father Nephon Abraham. So this is to get all of you interested. We learn from the past. This is to help us to get interested in how we're going to go forth next year and help out now on this planning for next year when we have something happy, we have something patriotic, and we have something that we can all learn from. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Mr. Jaar?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we planning on having a selectmen's meeting on February 2nd, which is two days before?
I haven't looked at the calendar, actually. I don't believe so, no.
Okay. I think.
I'm sorry. What day? Seconds.
The 2nd, two days before town meeting. Just that, trying to schedule with you, Mr. Chairman, how we can present the Pocket Park potential sites for discussion, the very limited number of sites.
You want it just out at 26, or is that too soon, and we'll do it, whatever the next meeting after that is?
Yeah, after that, because I may not be here.
Two minutes from now, we'll put it on.
Okay. That would be great, then allows Matt and I to work with Tony on some information, to share with everyone, to see if we would want to even consider it, so. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney? Anything? Mr. Lane? All set?
Good.
Very good. I'll accept the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Pox? Unanimous. Thank you all for your patience and help tonight. Thank you.